Okay, I'm going to call this first of 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order on January 9th at 6:00 PM, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we are pleased that so many of us are able to make it tonight on our roads, but I will say, I think our roads are pretty darn good. I'm not unhappy about them at all. So, anyway, thank you, those in the audience, for coming. Thank you, city, for putting it up online so quickly so that Heather, one of the commissioners, could be with us tonight, and anyone else who's not able to make it, that kind of opens up the playing field, and that feels good. Okay. First on the agenda, I do want to do a shout-out from all of us to Virginia Ferguson, our other commissioner. Her partner passed away last week, and so she is taking the night off. So, Virginia, if you're listening, we're thinking about you, and we are going to miss Mac, having him in the room every single meeting. So, he will be deeply missed. Okay. First on our agenda, roll call.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Here.
Commissioner H. Wiley.
Here.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Okay, consent agenda. Has everybody had time to look at the minutes? This one? Oh, yes. I'll swear people in. You're right, I should do that first. Okay, before we get started on the consent agenda, those who wish to speak tonight, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Even if you wish, think you might want to speak, go ahead and be sworn in. Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Okay. Now consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve this case.
Is there a second? I'll second it. And we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. First on our agenda is case number 24-600-01, special sign permit, 4510 South Noland Road. Staff, will you give a report, please?
That was on the consent agenda.
Oh, you're right. You're right.
Blame it on the snow.
Okay. First on our public agenda is continued case 23-400-19, short-term rental at 25550 East Bunshu Road. And we're ready for report.
Okay. As you mentioned, this is case 23-419. The project name is Carney Woods, and it's a short-term rental. The applicant is Quentin Carney, and the action is a short-term rental at 25550 East Bunshu Road. And as you can see on the map, it's, it is near Bunshu and 7th Highway, kind of the eastern part of Independence. This is the notification area map. This is on quite a large piece of property, so I included the proposed short-term rental building in purple, and then the areas in the light red were notified. They received a letter notifying them of the application. Here's an aerial photograph. I circled the house that's going to be used for the short-term rental on there, and I have a second aerial photograph that kind of zooms in, and you can see, the one on the right is the house that's going to be used as a short-term rental, and the one on the left is newly constructed that the applicants will be living in. And I'm not sure if it's visible on the screen, but there is a property boundary between them. There are two separate properties. So here's another map showing the location. It's, as you can tell, in the far eastern part of the city, very far away from any other short-term rentals, so there's no issues with the 500-foot buffer distance for other short-term rentals. So here's the floor plan. It's a three-bedroom. It's got a kitchen and a living room, and two bathrooms, one of which is adjacent to the primary master bedroom, and the other on the other end of the building. Here's the evacuation plan. There are three exits, a front door and a back door, and then a side door off the laundry And this is the parking plan that was submitted by the applicant. Basically, it's a very large paved driveway. I'll show you that in the pictures. There really shouldn't be an issue for parking because it's quite a large paved space. Okay. So the proposal is Quentin Carney seeks the approval of a home business permit to operate a short-term rental at 25550 East Bunshu Road. Property history, this property has been, or had been, in unincorporated Jackson County until it was annexed into the City of Independence in 1974. Before and after the annexation, the property was used for agricultural purposes. In 1980, the zoning was updated to be A1 agricultural, and in 2009, when the current version of the UDO was adopted, the zoning was updated to RA, residential agricultural. The zoning of the property has remained unchanged since this update in 2009. The applicant purchased the property in 2020 and built a modular home on the site. The current boundaries of this property were established in 2021, when a 143-acre property was split into two lots. The brand-new house has been constructed on the smaller 16-acre lot, and by the time of the public hearing, the applicant will be living in the newly-built home. I actually don't know if that's quite true. I think there may be, it's very soon. The new house is almost finished, and they should be moving in soon. The proposed short-term rental is the applicant's former residence in the modular home that exists on the larger 127-acre lot. The two houses are 270 feet apart. The characteristics of the property. The home lies on a 127-acre lot. It's a single-story home with a large paved driveway on the east side of the building. The house has three bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen, two bathrooms, and an open laundry room. And the characteristics of the area, the surrounding area is almost entirely comprised of farms, agricultural land, and single-family residences. Parking. The property has a 30-foot-wide driveway that sits adjacent to the home. The large driveway can easily accommodate several vehicles. Given the large amount of paved driveway space, this should not be an issue. Regarding unruly guests and security, the applicant will be living on the adjacent property. Property management and booking will be handled by the applicant. Unruly guests can be easily monitored by the applicant. While a noise monitoring device has not currently been installed, the applicant has indicated that such a device will be installed prior to operating as a short-term rental. In the event of an emergency, or should he be needed, the applicant will be able to quickly respond to issues or concerns, given the proximity of the STR to the applicant's home. Okay, the short-term rental requirements. The applicant must address the following topics. Noise monitoring. The applicant has indicated that they will install a noise monitoring device prior to beginning operations. Trash removal. Trash pickup is scheduled for a weekly pickup on Mondays by AAA. The property listing. The property will only be listed on VRBO. And the business operations, the applicant will oversee the site's security and general business operations, including screening customers and coordinating bookings. Regarding the short-term rental checklist, the form is completed by the applicant, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite information, posting, and so forth. Regarding fire safety, a fire evacuation plan has been submitted along with floor plans of the house. The fire escape plan must also be posted per code requirement. City inspection. The property has been inspected by the fire inspector and passed the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. And as previously mentioned, there are no other short-term rentals in the area. Therefore, this application follows the density limitations of the city code. Okay, so this is the picture, looking into the property. This is right off of Bunshu at the gate to their property. This is facing west, looking into their property. It's obviously agricultural land use. This is facing northeast, looking at the neighbor's property. It's hard to tell in this picture, but there is a house behind those trees. This is looking southeast, across Bunshu, to their neighbor's house. This is directly, kind of diagonally, from the gate, from the first picture. So this is facing south, looking down Bunshu. And this is facing east, looking the other way down Bunshu. So this is the house itself. This is a little ways onto their property. This is the modular house that will be used for the short-term rental. And this is the driveway that I mentioned. You can see the two trucks parked there, and it goes all the way, kind of flush with the back of the house, so there's lots of paved space. Here's kind of another view of it. Very large paved driveway. So this is facing west, looking at the other house. So you can see, this nearby one is the short-term rental, the proposed short-term rental, and the other house in the back is their new residence. So they're very close. So our staff recommendation is approval of the short-term rental with the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. Number two, the business must comply with all safety and other standards established by 14420 of the city code. The maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to six adults and no more than eight persons in total. And the maximum number of bedrooms shall be three. The noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated. The Good Neighbor Guidelines, evacuation plan, and other notices must be posted prior to approval of a business license. And that completes the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions of staff before we bring the applicant forward?
Madam Chair. Could you, just because I don't have it memorized and don't have a copy in front of me, number two on the recommendations, what is section 14-420? What does that, it says other safety standards.
So that's the, references the section of code that talks about short-term rentals and bed and breakfasts. So it's just the, so, I mean, there's quite a bit, like, that's just, refers to the section of code that specifically talks about, yeah.
Legal terms.
Okay, thank you.
Legal terms. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Josh, we came up with a problem this week about this unit, is that correct?
Yeah, I was, I was just brought to my attention yesterday, I think there is potentially an issue with the septic on the property. So they're building this new home, and they had installed a septic system for the modular home, the first home, but there's not a second one for the, for both, and it appears that state statute might require separate systems for, like, for each, each house.
Okay. So you typed up all this paperwork already ahead of time when you found that out. Why would you guys still recommend approval if it's not legal yet?
So our thoughts were that, so they, they have to meet all the requirements for getting a business license, so even if you all approve them tonight, they still have to meet the other requirements of city code to be issued a business license. So whether or not they can or cannot operate a short-term rental is one question, like, whether or not they have permission, I guess, to operate a short-term rental is one question. Whether or not they have met the code requirements to get a business license is another.
So that sewer would come underneath the business license aspect?
That would certainly hold up. Hold things up for them to get a business.
Not a question I should warn you, since it's RA, I guess we have nothing in our codes about being RA to run a short-term rental or any type like that on that, since it's.
No, there's no limitations for, you know, it does distinguish between commercial and residential uses for short-term rentals, and so this would just fall under the general, like, same thing for any residential use of, whether it's R6 or R12 or whatever. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, would the applicant like to come forward? And please state your name and your address.
My name's Quentin Carney, 25550 East Bunshu. As for the septic system, we actually, there is two subsystems, one for the modular and one for the house, and there's also one for the barn. So there's three. So I don't, I don't know how that got twisted up or not, but Star Homes, they're the ones who built the house, and they're the ones who pulled the permit to do the second system for the house. So I don't, I don't know how that got twisted, or where you found that out.
Well, I was just told something like this, but now the road doesn't go over the septic system, does it? The driveway?
No, just the line, but like, the actual, like, where the, like, where the lateral field is.
Yeah.
That's out in the field.
That's out in the field.
Yeah, both of, all three of them.
So the ladder fields are out in the field, but the line going to it, you go across the, with the driveway. I'm guessing that's legal, I don't know. That's going to be up to staff to figure that out.
Well, I know that when the, when we did the modular home, they came out and checked everything, and it's the same way it goes over, you know, the goes, the line goes under the driveway and then opens up into the.
Nobody said anything then?
No.
Okay, well, if they came and inspected it then, that'd be good.
And then they came out, I believe they came out again and inspect, because, you know, once you have it all opened up, they come out and check everything before you backfill it all back in.
Right.
And they came out again and inspected it, and it's the same sort of layout as the first one.
Okay.
Well, good.
Good.
Check that.
Check that. Any other thing you want to tell us about this?
Well, this isn't our first time running VRBOs or short-term rentals. We've run some in other cities that we've owned houses in, and also in Kansas City up north. We don't do, like, where the, like, when you can, when you go to VRBO, you can just automatically select some places to go stay, and those, the landlords on those aren't looking at who's actually staying in the properties. We don't do that. We actually have them request it, and then we go and look them up. We look up their, like, their Facebook, their Twitter. We want to go see who they are before we have them out, not only just this, but any property that we're doing VRBOs with, because we want to make sure that our places don't get destroyed. And a lot of times, people are so wild with their social media, you can, you can see a lot, like, just by a quick five-second glance, and you can deny that, you know, you can do what you need to do there. And especially just because, you know, I have young children. I have an 11-year-old daughter and a 15-year-old son. I don't, you know, I want to make sure I have the right people there. You know, we thought about doing a long-term tenant, but the idea of being on 143 acres is, you know, that you don't have a lot of neighbors, so I didn't want to have somebody all the time, but I thought, heck, it's here. If I could do something with it, you know, it'd be nice. So, and we have cattle and chickens and things, so.
Do you want to, I guess, tell us about that, a little bit about the house, the layout?
The modular?
Mm-hmm.
So it's a single-story. When I first bought it back, when we bought the land, and I thought we could just live in it during construction, it was built, and I think the modular was built in, like, the 80s, and I brought it in, I poured a concrete foundation, set it on the foundation, tied it all into it, and so it's, it's an adhered structure. There's, there's no moving it again. I, because I didn't ever plan on moving it, I thought I'd keep it. And then I went ahead and, like, redid the flooring, and, you know, I made it really nice on the inside. When the fire guys came out, they were like, heck, I want a weekend here.
That's good. That's a good vote of confidence.
Yeah, so, you know, we redid the cabinets and all that, so we tried to make it look nice, because we were going to, we lived in it for two years while we built our other house, so we wanted it to be nice for us, and then now we can share it with other people. But everything's updated, isn't it? Like, the HVAC is new, hot water's new, any, I put a new panel in. When we, when we got it, there was an old panel, I put a new panel in it, just updated everything to make sure that it was perfect.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none. Commissioners, any other questions before I close the public case of the applicant? Okay, public portion of the case is closed. I would entertain a motion or any more discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve case 23-400-19.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
And we're ready for a vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal.
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-400-19, short-term rental at 25550 East Bunshu Road, has been approved. Thank you, and good luck. Case number 24-400-01, short-term rental at 9619 East 29th Street Terrace South. Would you give us a report, please? That's a mouthful.
Yeah. So this is case 24-401, Lenisha Neely, STR. The applicant is Lenisha Neely. The action is a short-term rental at 9619 East 29th Street Terrace South. So this is kind of on the opposite side of the city, in the far western part. All that rants, getting the presentation pulled up, I think. Okay. Okay, so you can see it's near Blue Ridge Boulevard and 31st Street South on the map there. So here's the notification area map for this property. And here's an aerial photograph as well. Here's a map showing the nearest short-term rental. The blue area around the property is a 500-foot buffer. As you can see, it's, it's well away from the other, the nearest short-term rentals. So it is allowed per the density requirements. So this is the floor plan drawn by the applicant. There are two bedrooms, a living room, and a bathroom, and a dining room, and an attached garage. And there also is a basement on the property. This is the floor plan and fire exit plan for, for the property as well. Here's the parking plan. There's a two-car garage with space for two-car wide driveway space as well. Okay, the proposal. The applicant uses 9619 East 29th Terrace South as their primary residence. Their intention is to rent this property on a short-term basis via websites such as Airbnb, VRBO, and Booking.com. When the property is rented, the applicant intends to stay with family in Lee's Summit. The applicant seeks approval by the planning commission to legally use this property as a short-term rental. The property history. The home that sits on the property was built in 1950. The property was platted in January 1951 as part of the Rockwood View subdivision. When the City of Independence introduced its first zoning ordinance in 1965, this property was zoned R1, single-family residential. Upon the next update to the city's zoning ordinance in 1980, this property was designated R1B, single-family residential. And finally, in 2009, when the current version of the UDO was implemented, this property was designated as R6, single-family residential. The house has been used for single-family residential purposes since the home was initially built in 1950. The physical characteristics of the property. The home lies on a half-acre lot. It's brick house with a paved, it is a brick house with a paved driveway on the west side of the building that leads to an attached garage. The house has two bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen, a bathroom on the ground floor, and additional, an additional bathroom and a shower in the basement of the home. The characteristics of the area. The surrounding residential neighborhood features homes of single-family, features single-family homes of similar design and size. Parking. The property has a two-car wide driveway that leads to an attached garage. This large driveway can easily accommodate several vehicles. Given the large amount of paved driveway space, this should not be an issue. Unruly guests and security. The applicant does not currently have a noise monitoring system installed in the home, but has indicated that they will install such a system before beginning operations. Other details regarding unruly guests and security have not been provided. The short-term rental requirements. The applicant must address the following topics. Noise monitoring. The applicant has indicated they will, will install a noise monitoring system prior to beginning operations. Trash removal. Trash pickup is scheduled for a weekly pickup on Tuesday by Ted's Trash. Property listing. The property will be listed on Airbnb, VRBO, and Booking.com. Business operations and security. The applicant will oversee site security and general business operations, including screening customers and coordinating bookings. The cities, the city's short-term rental checklist. The form was completed by the applicant, covering licensing, future inspections, insurance, onsite information posting, and so forth. Fire safety. A fire evacuation plan has been submitted along with floor plans of the house. The fire escape plan must also be posted per code requirement. City inspection. The property has been inspected by the fire inspector and passed the initial short-term rental fire and life safety inspection. There are no other short-term rentals in this area. Therefore, the application follows the density limitations of the city code. Okay, now for the pictures. This is facing southwest, looking at the property. This is the house in question. So this is facing west, looking directly adjacent to the property. This is facing northwest, looking at 29th Terrace South. This is looking across the street, kind of at a diagonal, across 29th Terrace. This is the house that's directly across from the street, across 29th Terrace. This is the house that's directly across from the street, across 29th Terrace. This is facing east, looking across the street. And this is looking the other way down 29th Terrace, Terrace South. And then you can see the, the subject property in the foreground and kind of facing south, looking at the adjacent properties to the, to the south. Staff recommends approval of this short-term rental with the following conditions. The short-term rental shall obtain a business license in accordance with the city code and comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the city code. The occupation license number shall be listed on all advertisements and online platforms. The business must comply with all safety and other standards established in section 14-420 of the city code. The maximum occupancy of the premises shall be limited to four adults and no more than six persons in total. The maximum number of bedrooms shall be two. And the noise monitoring system shall be installed and activated. Good Neighbor Guidelines, evacuation plan, and other notices must be properly posted prior to approval of the business license. And that completes the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions before I bring the applicant forward? Okay.
Question? I wasn't around, I think, when some of these were made, and just out of curiosity, what are, you said density requirements, what are the density requirements?
Yeah, so, short-term rentals are not allowed to operate within 500 feet of any other short-term rental, at least in residential areas. So there are no other short-term rentals within 500 feet, therefore, it complies with the density requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? I'll have to swear you in.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
It's all right, it's okay. Come on up. Will you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, say I do.
I do.
Thank you.
All right.
And if you'll state your name and your address, please.
Lenisha Neely, 9619 East 29th Terrace South.
Thank you. And tell us anything you would like to about your adventure.
Okay, um, so I'm looking to earn a little extra income, given that I want to go back to school, and I don't want to take out any student loans. So I was kind of talking to some friend of mine, and they're like, well, you could do Airbnb when you're not at your house. A lot of times I'll go stay with my parents and check on them, and they don't stay too far, they stay in Lee's Summit, which is probably only like 20 minutes away from my house, and they're always wanting me there. So I figured when I'm not at my place, I can just go to theirs if I need to. So that's part of the reason why, I'm just trying to see if I can make a little extra income and kind of use my property when I'm not actually in it to make some money.
Yes, I just, I just noted that, that it is your actual home.
Yes, yeah. And that's why I'm very selective on who I would have in it, because I've also put a lot of money into rehabbing the house. I bought it in 2021, and in two years, I've done a lot of improvements and definitely don't want anybody that's going to just come in and tear it up, so I'm going to be very selective who comes in my house.
Very brave. Any other questions from commissioners?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My, I guess my question, though, is the noise monitoring system is a pretty pricey thing, it's my understanding that it's pretty expensive to, to put in the house. I'm just wondering if, if she's looked into that.
Yeah, I looked into it. I, I do have a savings, so I don't mind pulling money from my savings, but also, like, for me to go back to school, I just wasn't trying to pull from my savings account to be able to pay for school. So, like, I have money, but I'd rather, if I can make extra income, do this as a way to pay for school, is how I was looking at it.
Got it, thanks. Commissioner?
Approximately, how far is it from your parents' house to this property?
Uh, they probably stay no more than 20 minutes away. Yeah, they stay pretty close.
Plenty of time for you to respond if there's a problem.
Yeah.
Well, if there's a problem at her home, she'll probably be there in five.
Yeah.
I would be.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Are you the only resident at this house then?
I am.
Okay. You don't plan, I don't know how the layout is, but I'm guessing you can't put a third bedroom in the basement?
Uh.
Because you got to have access to get out?
I mean, I wouldn't be interested in doing that, so.
Okay, that's just one to make sure, because.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're in a good location for it, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Um, my only other, really, it's not a question, but I would definitely put in a noise, the, what's it called?
Manute.
Yeah, manute, however you say it. I mean, because it alerts you.
Yeah.
So that would be a nice tool to have.
Do we require that?
Yeah, I think we do. That's all we have, I think. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak for this case? Is there anyone here to speak against this case? Hearing none. Commissioners, any other questions of the applicant, or are we ready to close the case?
Actually, one more question.
Okay.
So you require this device, so do you go back and check before relicensing to make sure there's a device in there?
Yeah, before the business license can be issued, we, we do an inspection to make sure that they've followed the conditions outlined here. So we make sure that there's a noise monitoring system, that they've posted the, everything that's required of them to be posted, like the fire, fire exit plan. So we do make sure that everything's in place before we do issue the business license. Yes.
Well, the question was, they got the license, do you ever go back when it's time to re-license, to make sure that everything's in there?
I'll let Brian answer that.
Okay. I mean, yes, we will. I mean, I don't think we've had this in place long enough to actually do a recheck yet, because I don't think there's been the license renewal yet.
So it's, the license is good for how many years?
One year.
One year.
Just like a business.
Wow, this is new, okay. And that's fine, I wasn't, you know, we, we, if we were going to give them a business license, we probably ought to treat it like a business and just make sure that everything's in place, and so thank you for your answer.
They do get fire inspected once a year, right? Towards their anniversary?
Yeah, it's part of the business license.
Yeah, I was going to say, I do, still.
Yeah, I don't.
All right. Turn your mic off, just kidding. Okay, any other questions? I'm going to close the public hearing, and commissioners, I will entertain a motion or any other discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would recommend approval of case number 24-400-01.
Okay, is your second?
Yes, I'd like to second, please.
Thank you, and we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ashbaugh.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 24-400-01, short-term rental at 9619 East 29th Terrace South has been approved. Thank you and good luck. Happy studies. Okay, do we have anything for the greater good that you need us to know before the next meeting, other than we have a lot of cases? Is it eight? Something like that?
Yeah, I think it's eight.
Okay, so.
I did have one thing, because we were here early. Thank you, Dan O'Neill. Dan and I were talking, and I wondered if we have more of those training books on the zonings and things like that, that I think Brian, you put together for us, somebody put together for us.
Since we have two new members on the commission, it would be great to have those if we could.
Yeah, we can, we can make sure you get those in the next packet or next meeting.
No problem, thank you.
Just looking out for him.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to remind everybody that next Wednesday will be the opening of the North Point Development, one of the buildings, and the chamber's having a luncheon that day, so be sure and make that if you can.
Thank you. Anybody else? Drive safe.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair. Thank you for letting me attend virtually. I'm not feeling great, so this is very helpful. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for zooming in. It is nice that we have this option. It does level the playing field, which I appreciate. Okay, everybody drive safe, dress warm, and do not apply the Blake's, the brakes in haste. Slow down. We are adjourned at 6:41.